Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanoz. And Mrs. Yerko.
Present.
Thank you, Council. Can we please have approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin with a reminder that city offices will be closed for business on Monday, February 15th, for President's Day, which also happens to be an in-service training day for all the employees. Normal business hours will resume on Tuesday, the 16th, which is the next date of our next city council meeting. Of course, refuse collection will not be impacted by the in-service training day. And also, I wanted to take a minute just to talk about Black History Month and all that we're doing in Sterling Heights to recognize this month. And also, I wanted to provide a spotlight on a DPW employee. So if I can turn your attention to the screen. The library, in conjunction with the African-American Coalition, has come up with an extensive list of programming activity that will be ongoing throughout the month. So let me just highlight some of the features. First, the library will be hosting a virtual Storytime featuring the Sterling Heights Ethnic Community Committee members, including Sharon Allen, Carmen Williams, reading stories about Black history. And of course, most of this is all done virtually via Facebook or Zoom. In this case, Facebook on February 9th, beginning at 10:30 in the morning. So please tune in for that. And then there's three sessions of the library's classic youth programming, which will feature a Black history theme. And that includes toddlers and a few other groups as well. Registration is required. You can call the library to get registered for that program. In addition, the library will be hosting the documentary, Black Men in White Coats, on February 12th at noon. In 2013, the Association of American Medical Colleges released a concerning report informing the nation that the already low number of Black men applicants to medical school was decreasing. To combat the problem, Black Men in White Coats brings awareness to an issue that not only affects the black male population, but also the nation as a whole, as there's always a demand for medical school applicants and those entering into the profession. Participants will be emailed instructions on how to view the documentary morning of February 12th. So please tune in for that very interesting program. And then also, an expert from the DIA, the Detroit Institute of Arts, will be present. Will present the creative contributions of African-Americans from the 19th century through the present. Program will take place, in this case, via Zoom, and registrants will be emailed instructions on how to do that. So you can call the library or simply go to the library's website to register for that event. And then, theme walking in our shoes, Black History Month panel discussion is scheduled for February 20th, beginning at 11:30 a.m. Panelists include members of the Sterling Heights African-American Coalition and also the Sterling Heights Ethnic Community Committee and other prominent local figures. Once again, registration is required, in this case, as well. So you can see, there's a lot of activities. And this is more of a regional event, but residents are invited to explore an interactive exhibition on how African-Americans shaped the notion of what it means to have the right to vote. And this event takes place on February 23rd at 3:00 p.m. and is brought to the city by the Charles H. Wright Museum of African-American History. Again, registration is required. So you can go to our library website to see all these activities and programming and choose the ones you like and tune in accordingly and participate. And now, I wanted to highlight the individual in our DPW department that I mentioned early on. And this happens to be Ron Pickett, who served the country as a boiler technician in the Navy from 1988 to 1992. He spent a majority of his time on the USS Dale, a late-class cruiser. Ron was part of a team that kept the engine boilers running that powered the 533-foot-long ship, which you see in the picture before you. Boiler technicians regulate high- or low-pressure boilers through regular inspection, including reading and recording pressures and temperatures and the like. And as you can imagine, the very sophisticated systems and the skill set needed to do, maintain them, is quite significant. And interestingly, the skill set transferred nicely to Ron's current job, where he uses the skills from the military daily while working on the water distribution system in the city, which in many ways is even more sophisticated than this Navy cruiser ship. So I wanted to recognize Ron in light of Black History Month. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Ron for his service to our country and his dedication to the city of Sterling Heights. While Ron could not be here this evening, I know he appreciates the shout-out. And we're really lucky to have Ron on our city team, so it's my honor to recognize him this evening. So, moving on from the events of Black History Month, I should also mention that the halo will be lit this weekend as well, in honor of Black History Month, to recognize those themed colors. And moving on, I would now like to introduce, Mayor, if you don't mind, our city planner, Chris McLeod, who's going to talk about a new COVID grant program that's targeted toward businesses, small businesses, in our city. And I think you'll find this interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, Mr. Vanderpool. Just a brief update in terms of what we've been up to with CDBG funds over the course of the last month or year or so. We're introducing, as of yesterday, actually, our Small Business Relief Grant, which is available for businesses throughout the city of Sterling Heights. Vanderpool, if you could forward the slides. Appreciate that. So the program introduction goes as forward is that we're inviting any small business, which is defined as 500 employees or fewer, that have a physical location within the city of Sterling Heights, to prepare a communication, which is available online. We'll go through that in one moment. For potential to receive grant funding of up to $10,000 per business that would be awarded to those businesses. And again, this is CDBG-funded grant applications, so there are a number of conditions that go along with it. But we'll go through those very quickly. But this is an extension of Phase One program that we've already been involved with. The Phase One program was for microenterprises, which were for businesses of five employees or less. We've been in the process of handing out those applications for qualified businesses as we've gone to this point. Phase Two is a much larger production. We have basically doubled the amount of money that would be available for the small businesses. Basically, you'd have to demonstrate a loss of revenue during the COVID-19 pandemic, have, again, less than 500 employees, and can document that at least 51% of your full or part-time employees receive a pay rate of less than $44,000 per year. Again, some of these qualifiers are CDBG qualifiers that we cannot modify, and the businesses ultimately have to meet. Next slide, please. So again, in terms of what is the CDBG program, Community Development Block Grant, again, this is coming down from the federal government, from the HUD funds. But basically, we have to provide presentation from our side of things to say that we are preventing, preparing for, or responding to the coronavirus pandemic. Obviously, there's a multitude of ways to do that. And so our program is designed to kind of allow that to occur. So basically, if you provide ultimately receipts that say, this is how you've lost revenue, and this is how you're ultimately responding to that, it meets these objectives, which have the ability to potentially qualify you and afford additional grant money. So household income, again, your main qualifier is that if you're basically receiving less than $44,000, the employees, 51% of them, are receiving less than that rate. Next slide, please. Eligible applicants. Again, this is the list of criteria here. And again, a lot of these are not necessarily negotiable from the city's standpoint, because these are being brought down from the federal government. But again, being physically located within the city, 500 or less employees, 51% qualify as low to moderate income incomes, be able to demonstrate they've experienced that loss. A lot of these things should be relatively easy to do, unfortunately, based on the pandemic. Have a Dunn's number and have a Sam's number as well. Those are qualifiers as well that we have to make sure that you have, so that way for tracking purposes. Because that's part of the backend of these grant applications, is that the city's CDBG program will ultimately have to track these. So in terms of the grant, staff, where we review eligible applications based on four main criteria, this is our scoring criteria. Capacity, at what capacity was your business actually impacted? Was it fully closed? Was it closed for a short period of time? Were you limited in terms of the capacity, or were you able to remain open the entire time? Number of employees, basically, again, zero to 500. But we are emphasizing smaller business will actually score higher on this scoring system. Again, we're trying to help out the small businesses, the local businesses within the city. So again, if you have a lower number of employees, you actually score higher rather than someone who has 500. Revenue lost, obviously, taking a look at that. CARES Act, in terms of the award, once we go through the process, we close the bidding or we close the award process, we go into this section and we say, okay, you have 15 days, and basically do a grant agreement with the city. That basically locks everybody in, in terms of what the award amount is and what the requirements were. And then, that all has to be returned to the city. Once that happens, we can then start the process for bringing the checks for city council to essentially award. And that's done in terms of typically your consent agenda. So in all reality, we're looking at a 30-to-40-day process, once the award is actually, once we determine what that award is, to money in hand, so to speak. So again, in the next couple of months, that should be rolling out. Start getting those applications in. So as part of this process, we developed a whole landing site, a whole website, from the city's standpoint. Hopefully, pretty easy to find, pretty easy to navigate, apply online. As you see right there, these are actually just snapshots of the website itself. Next slide, please. So once you go, click on that Apply Online, the city invested in online software, so everything is fully integrated. So you basically click through the application, hit Submit at the end, you upload some documents, and we have the information all online. It's all navigable by city staff in terms of scoring, in terms of interacting with the applicants. So if we need additional information, we just shoot information out from this application, they submit it right back into the application. So all, again, all fully integrated. Even the award process goes through that as well. So really slick kind of software. Frequently Asked Questions pages, obviously, we created those as well. We went through, we thought of questions that, you know, each applicant may or may not have in terms of submitting these. So we tried to do some preemptive strikes, so to speak, in making sure that the questions that might come up are already asked. So again, we've created this website, we've gone out on the social media tour to promote this, obviously, on the landing page of the main homepage, Twitter accounts, the Instagrams, Facebooks, everything else. And so, at this point, the application is open for submittals. So, and then if anyone does have questions, they can contact city staff, whether it's in the City Development Department or CDBG themselves, and they'd be more than glad to help if there are any questions that anyone might have. So with that, I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention that, as of yesterday, this application wasn't able to assist businesses. So, any questions? I'll be more than glad to try and answer.
So the good news is, we'll be able to help about 60 businesses with this program. And it's far less rigid than the initial first phase of the program that was rolled out early on due to some unreasonable requirements from HUD. But we were able to work through those. This one's far more flexible. Many more small businesses will qualify quickly, and we're looking forward to pushing this money out. And lastly, on my report this evening, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act for council to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Michigan, case number And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by Ultimate Hydroforming Incorporated to amend the final project cost of the real property investment at 42605 Van Dyke made pursuant to industrial facilities tax exemption certificate number 2019-048.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I don't think so. I think Mr. Vander explained everything. Thank you.
Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vander. Next item on our agenda is to consider adoption of a tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the proposed Theriot Terrace Apartments development at 13001 14 Mile Road and 33333 Red Run Road. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to adopt the resolution approving the application by Ultimate Hydroforming Incorporated to amend the final project cost of the real property investment at 42605 Van Dyke made pursuant to industrial facilities tax exemption certificate number 2019-048.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I don't think so. I think Mr. Vander explained everything. Thank you.
Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vander. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by Ultimate Hydroforming Incorporated to amend the final cost of their real property investment made pursuant to industrial facilities tax exemption certificate number 2019-048 at 42605 Van Dyke Avenue. We have a presentation from our senior economic development advisor, Luke Bonner. Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Good evening, council, and Mr. Vanderpool. This is an amendment to a previously approved IFEC from May 7th, 2019, by Ultimate Hydroforming, after they took over the formerly vacant speculative building on Van Dyke in the Corridor Improvement Authority District, a 76,000-square-foot building. Their real property investment, based on their original application, was $4,288,053. And based on that investment, they qualified for a nine-year tax abatement due to increased costs overall for the project. Outside of a 10% increase, if there's an increase of 10% or less, these amendments can be made administratively, so this is beyond that 10%. So there is an increase of $1.7 million to the overall project, taking the overall final cost to just over $6 million. The term of the abatement does not change, but it does also increase the amount of city school taxes that are generated from this project. So there is going to be an increase of $77,550 city tax dollars generated because of this increase and $44,900 generated as the school tax increase as a result of this investment. Jennifer Lambert from Ultimate Hydroforming is here to answer any questions you might have, and I'm also available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonner. This time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Not? I'll close the public hearing. And council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to adopt the resolution approving the application by Ultimate Hydroforming Incorporated to amend the final project cost of the real property investment at 42605 Van Dyke made pursuant to industrial facilities tax exemption certificate number 2019-048.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I don't think so. I think Mr. Vander explained everything. Thank you.
Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Next item on our agenda is to consider adoption of a tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the proposed Theriot Terrace Apartments development at 13001 14 Mile Road and 33333 Red Run Road. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Radke.
Bear with me, okay. Resolve to, A, adopt the city of Sterling Heights tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the proposed Theriot Terrace Apartments development at 13001 14 Mile Road and 33333 Red Run Road, and B, approve the municipal services agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Theriot Terrace Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
That's all right. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was proposed last week, our last meeting, excuse me. Seems like last week, right? I'm strongly in favor of it. It'll bring affordable housing to our city and help our workforce development, so I'm in favor of it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, sir. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider adoption of a tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the proposed Theriot Terrace Apartments development at 13001 14 Mile Road and 33333 Red Run Road. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Radke.
Bear with me, okay. Resolve to, A, adopt the city of Sterling Heights tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the proposed Theriot Terrace Apartments development at 13001 14 Mile Road and 33333 Red Run Road, and B, approve the municipal services agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Theriot Terrace Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
That's all right. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was proposed last week, our last meeting, excuse me. Seems like last week, right? I'm strongly in favor of it. It'll bring affordable housing to our city and help our workforce development, so I'm in favor of it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, sir. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported. With no discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAPE professional and technical employees. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. This item does involve redefining and upgrading a soon-to-be vacant position. Historically, the Human Relations Division of the City Administration Department has been understaffed based on the number of full-time employees currently at 486. For the past 20 years, city management has dedicated one human resources professional and administrative assistant to discharge the human resources duties, which include employee recruitment, testing, interviews, benefits administration, and claims management. The city's assistant city manager lends support to labor relations, including collective bargaining, disciplinary proceedings, grievances, and coordination of labor council. For a city with our number of full-time employees, this really is not an ideal situation moving forward. With the Human Resources Division's longstanding administrative assistant announcing retirement in April of 2020, there's an opportunity to upgrade the position to a human resources coordinator. This change will provide more skills, directly benefiting the core functions of the Human Resources Division. The human resources coordinator will possess the educational and work experience directly related to human resources, rather than the more generalist administrative support skills currently required. So the baseline qualifications for the new coordinator position would be as follows: having a bachelor's degree in human resources or directly related major, professional HR designation, three years of job experience with the Human Resources Department. It's important to note that this upgrade, that with the upgrade, there'll be no increase in the number of full-time employees, and essentially, the costs will be cost-neutral in large part because the upgraded position still fits within the current job classification wage range. In order to create the human resources coordinator job classification, the city was required to negotiate with the MAPE Professionals Technical Employees Bargaining Unit. These negotiations produced the memorandum of understanding that's before the city council this evening. And for all the reasons I just mentioned, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council approve the memorandum of understanding, and I'm happy to address any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Yerko.
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the MAPE professional and technical employees, creating the human resources coordinator classification, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign it on behalf of the city.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Yerko.
I think that Mr. Vanderpool explained it very well, and it's always good when we can get administration and labor unions to agree, so I think it's a good thing.
Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments to city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Okay. If not, we have, for this first item, we have appointments. There are four positions that were nominated last week, and there's one requested appointment for the Youth Advisory Board, one, however, the Board of Review nominee has withdrawn. So we'll start, I suppose, with the Board of Ordinance Appeals to alternate. There are two openings to terms ending June 30th, 2023, where candidates have been nominated. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Joseph Bedford and Michael Bargowski to the Board of Ordinance Appeals to as an alternate to a term ending June 30th, 2023, so it's the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll take the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is for a open position, and there's just one appointment. Is there anyone who'd like to take this?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Yerko.
Resolve to appoint John Fenn to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the classifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Youth Advisory Board. One appointment to be made here. Is there anyone who'd like to make this motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint Miriam Abu Talib to the Youth Advisory
Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Youth Advisory Board. One appointment to be made here. Is there anyone who'd like to make this motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Miriam Abu Talib to the Youth Advisory Board to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, I think she'll be good.
Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is another agenda item to consider, one nomination to the Sterling Heights Board of Review. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we have, as I mentioned previously, the Board of Review nominee from the last meeting, drew his consideration. We have one opening to a partial term ending June 30th, 2022. Is there anyone who would like to make this nomination?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to a, acknowledge and accept the withdrawal by nominee Daruz Gabriel from consideration for appointment to the Board of Review, and nominate Laura Robinson for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Review at the February 16th, 2021 regular city council meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
Sure, Mayor Taylor. Ms. Robinson has served on the Board of Review in a different municipality, so I think she brings good knowledge right off from the start, and I think she'll be great on the Board of Review.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Jefferson.
A couple things. Mr. Vanderpoel, 19 Mile Road, I know it's supposedly finished, but when is it going to be finished, finished? Because it looks like the paint marks are already fading off of it, especially down toward river, Big River there. Another thing is, is there any plans to honor the guys and young ladies of the city who participated in varsity sports, who may have won some kind of honor or anything this year, because this year's been an off year, and I don't know if they're really getting celebrated like they would in the past. Another thing, I don't know when Black History became around here such an important topic. There's quite a few, you know, I've been coming around here for over 25 years. I've never seen it like this. I just hope we can go back to being one Sterling Heights at some point and stop this bootlicking that's going on here. Like I said, what's going to happen is, you honor people over here, and people are going to honor what's going on over here. So hopefully, we can all start to come together, back together as one Sterling Heights, not separate Sterling Heights, because we were coming together as one Sterling Heights and moving forward that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under our communications from citizens? Not? I'll close that portion, and we'll move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything tonight?
Mayor, only to add that 19 Mile Road, all the punchless items will be finished up in the fall, which includes permanent, I mean, spring, I'm sorry, which includes the permanent lane markings as well, tree plantings, school crossings, and the like, so spring. The road is open, though, that's the good news.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kuschubski?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one item for tonight in closed session.
Okay. Open it up to city council for any reports, new business? When once, twice? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Can we please have a roll call vote? Ms. Riska?
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Yanis, Mrs. Zarco.
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries, 6-0. We will adjourn into closed session, and we will not be returning tonight. Thank you very much for coming out and participating.